In order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to republik for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the business with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you, you can be seated. Thank you everyone for silencing your cell phones. First item on the agenda, excuse me, is approval of the agenda, I'll move it.
Second.
All right, motion by Bittenger, second by Carper, any discussion or changes? Here none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion passes four zero. Just to clarify, Supervisor Ang is out of country, I do not believe he's calling it. I don't think he's calling it. Michelle, do we have anybody on the line at the moment? No, okay, just wanted to make sure. All right, thank you. Next up is the consent agenda. Items two through six constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion, items passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item number two is approval of amendments at the April twenty ninth, two thousand twenty five meeting. Item number three is approval of claims. Item number four from Human Resources is Melissa Thomas, the approval of the memorandum of personnel transactions. And item B is authorization to initiate a hiring process. Item number five from Board Supervisors, myself, is approval to set a public hearing for Tuesday, May twentieth, two thousand twenty five, at four thirty five P M. for the Critten Center Community Development Block Grant Application. And number six from Planning and Zoning, Daniel Priestley, it's approval to schedule the June tenth at four forty P M., June seventeenth at four forty P M., and June twenty fourth at four forty P M. For three public hearings on a proposed zoning ordinance map amendment rezone of twelve point three two acres located on parcel ending in one zero one two, section twenty nine, T eighty six N, R forty six W, Sloan Township, from the Agricultural Preservation A P to the General Industrial Zoning District. And that is the end of the consent agenda, and I'll move that.
Say aye.
All right, motion by Bittenger, second by Nelson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay, motion passes four zero. All right, welcome everyone to our long meeting tonight, so I'm glad we're gonna be able to buckle in here and get through this here. Come on up Laura, from Secondary Roads, all receivers. First is the approval of resolution to lower the speed limits on K twenty nine as requested by Sergeant Bluff.
Right. I had received a request from the city of Sergeant Bluff for this, and Aaron is here with the city, so maybe he could speak to the history of why they're asking for this.
Sure, come on up, yeah. Yeah, just come on up, introduce yourself and title.
All right, yep. Yeah, my name is Aaron Lincoln, the City Administrator and Sergeant Bluff. Worked a little bit north of this area with Mark before he left. And so, as we were having discussions about the speed limit along Lakeport, which would be what K twenty nine is, Old Lakeport, we had some plans in the future, the school district did, kind of up on First Street, Two Tenth Street, in Lakeport, which they've started that project. They're installing right now some ball fields, relocating their ball fields. We've got residential development on each side of the road. This is, one of those roads is kind of a joint jurisdiction, so we combine with Woodbury County Secondary Roads with plowing and caring for a couple of streets, and this is one of them. Between, I guess, First Street slash Two Tenth down to Warrior Road on this map, that's fully in our, in our city limits. But the part south to where it hits K forty five or South Close Boulevard, Old Seventy Five, bunch of names, that is joint together. So what our council did on March twenty fifth had recommended that we pursue changing that to thirty five miles an hour, and so we submitted that to Laura to bring before the board. And if there's any other questions, I can certainly answer them.
Questions from the board? Seems pretty straightforward.
Okay.
All right.
Perfect, thank you.
I'll move it.
Second.
All right, motion by Nelson, second by Dietrich, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay, motion passes four zero.
On that resolution, would you please all sign it, and then also Michelle?
Sure. Okay. All right, item B is the approval of resolution to lower the speed limits on K forty five after the South Bridge Interchange is built.
Yeah, so we're getting to, well, we're in final design for the South Bridge Interchange Project, and some of the work depends on what the speed limit is, is how much wider the road needs to be, what type of turn lanes you need, and things like that. And so it comes down to, those are dollars and cents. And it appears that with the signal that we're gonna be putting in on K forty five and the new two hundred and thirty fifth street intersection, there's a signal there because the railroad tracks are so close to the intersection. It's gonna be a great safety improvement, especially with all the traffic that's going to be attracted to that interchange. So it makes sense when traffic from the south that is headed north to that intersection and that signal just have a little bit lower speed limit, just to start to see that that signal is approaching. Otherwise, sometimes what we'll do is we'll put up, you know, a flashing sign telling people, you know, the light is gonna be changing ahead. But we kind of looked at it with D O T and just felt that the forty five mile an hour speed limit on this section is probably going to come in the future anyways, once development starts. And so if we could just design to, we designed five miles an hour above this speed limit, so it'd be, the roadway would be designed at a fifty mile an hour speed limit, or speed, but the speed limit would be posted at forty five. And again, the reason why I'm asking for it right now is, is we're in final design, and we'd really like to know if the Board of Supervisors would approve that type of speed limit once the intersection, once the signal, once the interchange is all built. Would you be all right with us changing that speed, lowering that speed limit? I think it's probably a mile, mile north of here, of this location where it has already dropped to thirty five, so it's not going to be a shock to these drivers that they'll see a lower speed limit.
Yeah, I think the last part you just said is with the growth and development, and Sergeant Bluff's continuing to grow and it's growing in that area. There's a lot of traffic on that road already, so I, I think that if that's where you and the D O T and Sergeant Bluff are at, I think that's more than acceptable to lower that.
You might not see that though for two years. Like, I mean, until the whole project is done, you're not gonna see the speed limit change.
Seems reasonable. All right, I'll move it.
Second.
Motion by Bittenger, second by Nelson. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion passes four zero. Thank you Laura. All right, there you go. All right, item number eight from Iowa Economic Development Authority, I got Rob Wick. And so Rob, come on, come on up. Introduce yourself, and just tell us what you're here for.
And the main, the main item is that just information regarding unmet needs of Sioux Land Communities after the two thousand twenty four flooding. So introduce yourself and your goal.
Yes, good afternoon, thank you. Again, my name is Robert Wick. I'm the C D B G and Disaster Recovery Team Lead with Iowa Economic Development Authority. I have with me also one of our program managers, Terry Taylor Wolf. And really wanted to come and meet with you folks today, as we have been traveling around and meet with the other stakeholders and the communities that have been affected by the storms last year, and try to raise awareness of the funding that is going to be made available to these communities, discuss some of the timelines, some of the constraints, and manage expectations as we go forward and as we try and make those funds available. So less a formal presentation, more of a guide to frame the discussion. Made this available to you folks, we have it on the screen there. So I'd like, if we could, to kind of go through this. And if there are any questions that come up through the course as we kind of walk through this, please feel free to interrupt, and, you know, we can address any questions that have come up in kind. So, some things that are unique about the disaster recovery funding that comes through HUD is, it is some, it has to be the funding of last resort. If, actually, we could scroll through the next page, please. Again, it's the funding of last resort, so understandably, most individuals and communities have already engaged with insurance companies, FEMA, that sort of thing. So we wanna firstly try to prioritize funding to come alongside and be the non-federal match for a lot of those funds. But even if there are other funding agencies involved in various types of projects, again, the disaster recovery money has to come in as that last in. So as there are lots of ideas and projects that are proposed, that's just one thing we have to take into account that really defines how that is used. Something that is unique about disaster recovery funds is that it can be used for the long-term recovery of projects and communities. So looking at mitigations of flooding and other disaster impacts, and trying to allocate funds to mitigate future disaster impacts and criticality, we want to try and provide this value to the communities and utilize the unique elements of the disaster recovery funds in parity with any other funding that might be out there, and try and leverage some of these other unique elements that we'll talk through. So where we are with this action plan that we are creating, a big component of that that we have to develop firstly is the unmet needs assessment, and that is what we have been engaged currently in doing with all the stakeholders that have been affected, is trying to understand, you know, nearly a year later, what are the remaining unmet needs that your communities have? Because the creation of the action plan is not us putting together what we think the proposed projects and programs are gonna be, it's based off of what the community communicates to I E D A on what that needs to be. So the surveys that have gone out, and hopefully you folks have had that, the email links that have gone out and to you and any other members of your communities that are in a position to be aware of infrastructure and housing needs, these kinds of things, we wanna know that, so that way it becomes part of our action plan. It completes the unmet needs assessment, and then that's in turn what gets communicated up to HUD as what these programs will be and how that gets framed out. And so a timeline of where we're at with this. In January, HUD promulgated the Federal Register Notice and the Universal Notice that provided the allocation funding for all the communities that were part of that presidentially declared disaster. So that kind of began our ability to start taking these allocation values that we knew we were going to get, and then also all of the constraints that were gonna be applied to them, and start trying to figure out how we might begin framing out the different programs and how to provide these value back to the communities. As I mentioned, we've been doing the unmet needs assessment, the stakeholder meetings, gathering information from everybody to understand what your needs still are and how we can move that forward. We have a public comment period that is coming up here in the middle of May, and will last through probably the second week of June, where we will be posting the draft version of this action plan, so everybody will have an opportunity to review it, comment on it. There will be two public hearings that we're gonna schedule. One toward the end of this month, and one, I think, about the second week of June. We're gonna split those up so that, you know, they're on the front and back end of the public comment period, and also we're gonna split them up in terms of timing. We'll have one that's gonna be available towards probably the early part of the day in A M hours, and then one in the evening for other people to get off work, and they'll be able to participate. They will be virtual public hearings, but we're gonna have a mechanism available for anybody to provide questions, comments, those sorts of things, and then we'll be able to respond in kind to each and every one of those, capture all that data, and that, again, also feeds into the finalized version of that action plan and gets submitted to HUD, which our deadline is going to be June twentieth to get that out. So there's a lot of work that we have to do between now and then to have these kinds of meetings with the communities to understand what your infrastructure needs are, your housing needs, any planning or mitigation project needs, and if there are, incidentally, any other economic development projects that we can consider as part of this disaster recovery funding, we wanna take those into account as well, too. Because the more interaction we get, the more feedback we get from the communities, that's just gonna make that action plan and those allocation of funds that much more accurate, and minimize the amount of amendments and changes we have to make with HUD going forward. So also, just as an item of managing expectations with this timeline, as we know, the federal government has been very dynamic, shall we say, lately, so there are a lot of things that we don't know. We know that HUD has promulgated a forty five day response period, once we submit the action plan to them. So after that forty five day period, if they have no objections, they don't have any comments to the action plan, the expectation is that within another thirty to forty five days, they would execute the grant agreement between the federal government and the state for that overall fund, but we don't know reasonably how long that will actually take. So our internal goal is to be able to provide grant applications around the November, December time period, however, very heavily caveated with the response time of the federal government in getting those grant agreements in place. So if you can scroll up just once again, sorry, where we talk about the allocation values? So the overall allocation that we have from HUD that was promulgated back in January is a hundred and thirty four million, six hundred and eighty seven thousand. Of that, eighty percent of it must go to the federally identified, most impacted and distressed communities. Those are the counties of Clay, Sioux, Cherokee, and Woodbury. Outside of that, the other twenty percent of those funds could be used for what's gonna be quantified as the state mid areas. And I'll, there's a graphic I could show a little bit later that indicates all of those other communities. It's worth noting that seventy percent of all of this allocation, those funds, have to be spent to benefit the low to mod income residents. So when we get into housing, these kinds of things, it's very important that we consider housing price points, that they have to benefit those L M I individuals as the priority. And also worth noting that we have six years from the time that we execute a grant agreement with HUD to get all of these projects accomplished. And that might seem like sufficient time, but if we, you know, you folks have probably been very much ingrained in public works projects and procurement, and we know that timeline can get eaten up pretty quickly, especially when we're working with other stakeholders like FEMA, D N R, Army Corps, anybody else for any of these other projects that we have to coordinate on. So we do wanna try and expedite and prioritize those projects that are gonna require a lot of external stakeholder engagement. So on the next slide here, this is kind of a nice visual that indicates where the funds will be spent. You can see in the blue counties, those are the ones that I mentioned are the federally identified mid areas, and then all of the others that are highlighted in yellow also technically are eligible for the other twenty percent because they were identified and have presidentially declared disaster. And so the programs that we are looking at so far, again, prioritizing those projects that already have other stakeholders that have to be engaged, other funding or regulatory organizations. Those, many of these institutions, you know, like FEMA, are already working with you folks and the residents to, you know, plan projects and get things rolling. Understand that sometimes those can take a while, with all of the administrative constraints effective for these federal funding, so we wanna try and get those moving as quickly as possible, especially considering those projects have already been planned, and there are already plans moving forward to advance those projects. We wanna be able to offer the non-federal match component of that as soon as we can. And then the other priority we wanna be able to put forth is those planning projects that we can do either independent of having to require the communities provide applications, but maybe we can go directly with other partnering agencies. For example, we are already engaged with the Iowa Flood Center for doing updated flood mapping in this entire region, because this quadrant of the state had some out of date mapping. And obviously, as a result of the flood, sometimes those water bodies can change some of their courses, and there's some impacts as a result of that, so we wanna get some updated flood mapping as soon as we can, because then that might also affect any, affect any other mitigation projects we might do later. Also, as part of Iowa Flood Center's scope of work, we'll be updating and replacing the stream sensor, flood sensor network. We understand that was something that was not able to be funded in years past for various reasons. So since that was a big contributor to the inability of many constituents to be able to respond to the flood, we wanna be able to make sure that those sensors can get replaced as soon as possible, as well as trying to develop a push notification system for when those sensors are triggered, that the people in the communities can have some kind of alert notice to their phones or something like that, so that they can respond to any of those floods as they're happening. Another element of planning is to see if, as a consequence of the flood maps or any other studies that we might be able to do, if there are dedicated mitigation projects that we can do, either in the water bodies or in the communities, to mitigate the impact in any other future flood disasters to those areas. Obviously, a lot of these communities that were hit, they have a lot of businesses and homes and stuff like that that are just consequently in low-lying areas naturally. So any mitigation activities that we can do to lessen the severity of future impacts, we wanna try and prioritize that. Moving on to some of the general infrastructure, some of the obvious ones there. The flood protection, stormwater systems, drinking water, sewer systems. Most communities have already identified major projects that are working with FEMA on with those, so that would kind of be another consequence of using the non-federal match for some of those projects. For those projects that FEMA is not already working on covering, if, you know, there's no other funding, then we can be that funding of last resort, we can come in and cover a lot of those critical infrastructure projects. And again, we are going to be releasing the rounds of funding based on firstly what the communities tell us their priorities are, and the value of how the pot of money needs to be split among housing, infrastructure, planning, and all of these other kinds of things. But we want to prioritize the planning first and the mitigation, and then, once we've established some mitigations, then we start building critical infrastructure, and then we get into housing, because what we don't wanna do is provide investments into the communities and start rebuilding when there might be already still remaining risk for flood to the areas. So trying to make sure that the mitigations can be in place first, that there's critical infrastructures to support any new or rehab housing, and then get into the housing projects themselves. I think that makes a lot of sense, address the root cause analysis issues first, and then move forward from there. And then getting into single-family housing and new construction. So one thing that is unique also about disaster recovery funds in terms of HUD programs is that it can fund new housing. So again, that's another one of those strategic uses of this fund versus some of the others that might be utilized that we wanna try and be the most creative and leverage, because with the disaster recovery funding, we don't have some federal program constraints like American Iron and Steel, the Buy America provision, those kinds of things, they don't apply to disaster recovery funding. Also, if there are housing units that are being constructed, if they are seven units and under, then we're not having to utilize Davis Bacon requirements, which, again, these things can just mean that there's much more affordability applied to these projects versus, you know, if the funding were used in some other way. So we'll be working with you folks, with the administrators, that will be a part of helping you through the grant application and the project implementation phases, to make sure that we have kind of the best approach for utilizing the funds to the best value to the communities, and taking into account some of these federal constraints that, you know, we all have to abide by. One thing I do wanna indicate on here is, and, you know, we can underscore this probably five or six different times, is that for the funding, we do have to benefit the low to mod income peoples. So when we're looking at rental units, fifty one percent of those occupants have to be L M I individuals, and for single-family homes, those have to be L M I individuals. So again, when we're looking at how the balance is implemented between how much funding we apply towards infrastructure and how much funding we apply towards housing, we have to take into account how much money is being spent on infrastructure such that the housing becomes more cost-effective, right? So if we're doing more on, say, mitigation activities, then maybe the housing stock that was lost could be rebuilt without having to acquire land and build on some other far-flung part of the community. That would be cost prohibitive, and now you won't be able to actually support L M I peoples in those areas because what you built was too expensive. So wanted to be cognizant of that, and just make that part of the conversation as we go through the planning processes. And so we will be doing, toward the end of this year, again, presuming that we can have applications open about the November, December timeframe. We intend to have pre-application workshops mid-October so that we can have opportunities to put out the latest and greatest information about any information that we've got from HUD, from their approvals, how these programs are being defined, any of the other constraints, if any constraints have changed, any of the federal cross-cutting requirements, if those have changed, because on a quarterly basis, we have to be really engaged with our federal partners to understand, have they changed anything? And that way we'll have opportunity to make sure everyone is very well educated and informed before those grant applications open, and that, you know, we have projects that are well-prepared, well-planned, before we even make any awards on grant applications. So with that, I would be more than happy to answer any questions.
Have you been in contact with, or have you been contacted by leaders from, say, Riverside or Correctionville here in the county?
Have not yet, no.
Okay. We'll have to make sure it passes along, yeah. Thank you.
And as you said, those grant application workshops, are those, will those be held locally here?
So those will probably be virtually.
Sure, okay.
And we do a lot of that, actually, for my I E D A. We do recurrent trainings with, like, the COGS, for example, and some of the consultants that do administration on these grant programs. We do now occurring is a monthly training on different cross-cutting and federal requirements. And then, so this is something that is very common, and we're doing on a regular basis, and we'll be working probably with the same individuals that will be working with you on your potential projects beforehand to make sure everybody is very clear and aware of all of the constraints for the funding and managing all those expectations before the applications are submitted.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Very thorough, Rob. This is good stuff.
Okay, well.
We'll be in touch.
We definitely wanna hear your input. Any information that you folks have in your communities, or if there are some folks that are part of your communities that we need to be interfacing with, or any specific communities, please let us know who we need to be reaching out to directly, and these communities that might have been more impacted than others. We do have a survey on the next page, there's a Q R code here. This is a fairly short, like, five-minute survey that really helps us understand what those communities' needs are. The survey itself is more geared toward the leadership of a community or any of the, say, department heads that have an understanding more broadly of number, type of infrastructure, and these other kinds of losses that the community has incurred. Although any member of a community is certainly welcome to fill this out, it's just some of the stuff that we're asking might not be relevant to folks that don't maybe have a broader understanding of community needs. But certainly, anyone can fill this out and send this in. And again, it just helps us have a much more clear understanding of the detailed needs that each of the communities have, and the action plan will be representative of those communities' needs, not our best efforts at trying to fill in the blanks.
Okay. All right. Tina? Question, come on forward.
Good evening, Tina Bertrand, Woodbury County Treasurer. I do have a couple of questions. And how it can actually impact our community from a perspective of, and we get these questions a lot about assessed values and property taxes and stuff like that, kind of during that time period of loss and damage, and if this program is something that, when you talk about applying it to single-family residential homes and things like that, if that's part of the component, or if it's just directed towards costs of construction for repair. Again, like I said, that, and that not only impacts those in our county, but those in our, you know, our townships and our municipalities within our county. So I know that's a lot of questions that we have in our office, and what kind of help and assistance might be there to direct them. And I, again, don't know if that's something that the county would be looking at, or if that would be something that the individual homeowner would, would need to be informed about.
So I would say that, to answer your question, generally speaking, these programs are geared towards new construction or rehabilitation. And normally, we are working with the builders for those. And I will say that for these applications, for these programs, it can be the county that is an applicant, or it could be the specific communities. Either can apply because either are equally eligible. Usually, it's the communities themselves that apply specifically, but the county could as well, too. So I would say that if there is a need to have some funding... So I would say that if there is a need to have some funding that is other than just a traditional construction and rehabilitation type activity, let us know that of what your need is and how maybe you would propose working with some of that, to a very high level, very generic, it doesn't have to be very detailed. Because if that is submitted within a survey, we can take that into account and make sure that is captured, and then we can follow with you directly and figure out, okay, how might we actually do that in practice, to see if that's something that is going to be eligible? So that can be something that is either a formal submission through the action plan and notification, or that can be something we collaborate with along the way in the background and try and figure out, is there a way that we can do some of that apart from the standard flow of doing some of these projects?
Rob, have you been in contact with Mike Montino, Woodbury County Emergency Manager Director?
No, I have not.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I'll send you over his information.
Perfect.
Be good to be in contact with him. Okay. All right, anybody else? Any other questions? Okay.
All right, thank you for coming, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir, thank you. All right, good information. All right, number nine is any reports on committee meetings? Okay, yeah, none, all right. All right, moving on. Number ten is citizen concerns. All right, see, nobody moved to the microphone? All right, number eleven, board concerns? Any board concerns?
Mister Chair.
Yes.
I do have, I think all of the board was copied on an invite in reference to ISAC doing a ninety-nine county tour, so I was just wondering if a couple of you might stay over to help complete the survey. It's a real short survey, just of timeframes of when we would like them to come to Woodbury County.
Sure, okay, can do that, thank you.
Yep.